And I'll turn the mic on since we're calling our meeting. The record reflect that we started at 3:02, just a little bit tardy today. Yeah, the room looks a little sparse, doesn't it? Noticed.
I know.
First up, Commissioner Lindley, I think you have an introduction for us for the invocation and pledge.
Yes, I do. I'm very pleased to introduce today Pastor Mike Fordham of Kalan United Methodist Church. And I think he's over there. If you'd come up to the podium and lead us in a prayer, we will say the Pledge of Allegiance right afterwards. Thank you for being here.
Let's pray. Dear God, we begin this commission meeting by doing what's first first, and that is seeking you, acknowledging your presence, oh God, inviting you to be the center of these proceedings. So we thank you, God, for this amazing nation that we call home, where we're blessed with freedom, peace, security, opportunities to better ourselves and our surrounding communities. As we strive in this session to oversee our wonderful county, we especially ask you, God, for all those in leadership and all those sharing, for humility, for clarity of thought, integrity as well, listening ears to you, to God, and to each other as well. Give us, Lord, as we need desperately, your wisdom. Enable us to make the most of our diversity while working together in harmony with each other to bring the best common good possible. Give us passion and commitment for truth and justice, and courage to follow what we believe is best. All that's necessary, God, that we need to build up Leon County to be its absolute best for its citizens, we invite you to provide for us. Pour out your blessings then upon these proceedings, and above all, may you be pleased and glorified in all that we do, and it's in your wonderful name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Maddox, Mr. Chair, I'm going to ask that we postpone the presentation of the proclamation for Reverend Dr. Stilens, thank you, sir.
That will just give our wonderful supervisor of elections a few extra minutes at the podium. Welcome Mark Early, Leon County Supervisor of Elections, to the presentation for us on an update, the 2018 election and possible recommendations that he will be moving forward with for the 2019 legislative priorities from our Supervisor of Elections office. Thanks for being here, Mark.
My pleasure, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, how you doing, Rick? Interesting seeing you up here. It's good to see you up here. So I just wanted to do a quick presentation on the 2018 election cycle. It was certainly a challenging cycle, given the unforeseen hurdles we had to leap over on this one. There was also, it was very rewarding from my perspective, the record turnout. That was a great thing to see. So let's dive in. Oops, there we go. So, as I said, we had a record midterm turnout. I think that was mostly driven by a large increase in our young voters' participation. It was about 20%, 25% higher than normal. Of course, we were faced with the recounts. We've had now major recounts in the last three of four elections, the primary in 2016, and then the primary and the general in 2018. And of course, the general election, we had three statewide recounts and a city commission recount in the general. Some of the other, it wasn't really unexpected, but the requirement to bring in the Leon County share of the federal HAVA money to improve homeland security came very late in the game this year. It was late spring, and we had to develop a plan to implement the use of that money effectively, as well as get that completed, the spending of that money, by the election day, in the general election. So we're trying to conduct our primary and our general, there's a lot of advanced work that needs to be done, while we're trying to implement better security. It was great to have that money available, but it was certainly a challenge for staff. Also, as many here are aware, there was a lawsuit brought against 32 counties in Florida. We were one of them, under Section 4E of the Voting Rights Act of 1965. I think this came to the fore, the requirements for this because of the hurricane that had hit Puerto Rico a year or two ago, and the influx of voters, U.S. citizens from Puerto Rico. And 4E requires that if any voter shows up at a polling place that is from a U.S. flagged but Spanish-only school, they are not, they must not have their right to vote hindered by lack of knowledge of the English language, which means we had to have Spanish-language resources available in the broad spectrum throughout all of our polling places, early voting sites, our educational materials, social media, our announcements coming through the mail, and all of that. I think we were way ahead of the game. The model that we implemented very quickly here in Leon County became adopted, I think, through Judge Walker's ruling, to be implemented by the general election. We implemented ours, essentially 100% of our plan, except for putting the Spanish-language ballots, stuff about for the primary. We did that all for the primary election, so we were very proud of that. But again, that was an unexpected expenditure that we had to take on. We managed to fit it in our budget because we have allocations for contingencies and such, but very proud of that. And then, of course, Hurricane Michael hit, I think it was October 10th, roughly 10 days before early voting was supposed to start for the general election. Leon County, as we all are aware, was very, very fortunate that we weren't humbled by the force of that storm like our neighbors to the west. We were able to, since we didn't get hit so hard, we were able to send some resources from our equipment allocation, backup generators, portable air conditioning units, and that kind of thing, to assist our neighbors to the west. That was very helpful for them, and it was nice that we did not have to keep that here because we were the ones facing that problem. And of course, there was the early voting expansion, another ruling from Judge Walker, where we were allowed to put early voting sites on campus. That came late in the game, was very tough to do. We managed to do it at the Tucker Center, not necessarily the most central location, but we're hoping for the 2020 election cycle, we can move early voting sites into the hearts of both MU and FSU, and we're playing around with where we can potentially locate one over close to the TCC. As I said, we had record turnout here. Leon County recently surpassed 200,000 voters, so in our parlance, that's, we are now a major county, a large county. And, yeah, this showed up yesterday. The value there is the number of voters that turned out. We had 141,111, that's what should be in that value flag there, which is a record turnout in a gubernatorial election, certainly by number, but also the record turnout by percentage all the way back to 1996. So in recent history, the last 20 years, that was a great turnout. Again, primarily, I think, driven by students or younger population, but also just the, you know, there's a lot of interest in politics lately, and so people really showed up. We'll leave it at that. One thing we're very proud of is the number of first-time voters we had in Leon County, 4,618. That was by far our highest, I think, we've ever seen, even in general elections. And there's a quick graph down there for the turnout comparison in gubernatorial elections. Don't want to go through all these details too much here, but you can see the, between the Democrats and the Republicans, there was a roughly around 70-71% turnout where we lost voters, and it would have driven our numbers even higher, was in other party, third-party or nonpartisan voters. They did not turn out nearly as in the type of volume that we had with our partisan voters. By age group, this, I think, is a very telling graph here. It usually looks very similar to this, except for on the left-hand side, the 18 to 25 age group. Usually that is down below the 26 to 30% of, 26 to 30-year-olds, so it's nearly double what they normally show up to the polls for. So that was a very rewarding, I think it speaks well for our outreach efforts here, but also just the involvement of the community in the democratic process here. So it's very rewarding to see that. By race, again, the numbers weren't dramatically different until you get down to Hispanic and other, then it got to, it began to drop off some. So I think we need to do more outreach there to try and drive those numbers up. Statewide, well, there's three ways to vote. Election Day, vote by mail, and early voting. Statewide, most counties are pushing vote by mail. There's problems with vote by mail, as Commissioner Maddox, I'm sure, is aware from being on our canvassing board frequently. There's a lot of recreates that come from there, so it involves a lot of time to determine voter intent, since they are, those voters are not putting a ballot into the voting machine. That's why we started early voting here and have really pushed that. And the fact that we have almost the same numbers for Election Day and early voting is outstanding, I think. There's also problems with election security with vote by mail. If you're letting go of that ballot and sending it out to the world, it's hard for us to make sure that the right person is actually voting the ballot, even though they may be signing the certificate. Again, some breakdowns of how the turnout went here in Leon County, this is by, of the voters that voted, the by-party, the Dems and the Reps, that mirrors fairly closely the registration numbers here. But again, the other is about five percentage points below their registration numbers. They make about 20% of our population, but only turned out at 15%. And that 5% was divvied up between the Dems and the Reps. Again, we push early voting. If you want to go vote early, go earlier instead of waiting till the last day. That's what this graph basically shows. We did have, on the last three days of early voting at the Tucker Center, that one that we opened up very late, we had very low turnouts for the first, say, 11 days, but those last three days, there was a lot of turnout and even voting beyond the close of the polls because people were already in line. So trying to get students not to procrastinate, I guess, is the eternal paddle for most parents. But this, this graph right here, we actually doubled our, more than doubled our early voting turnout from the last gubernatorial election. So in 2014, we had almost 28,000. This time, we had 56,000 voters on those 14 days. So that takes a lot of the stress off of our election day numbers, and it's also not ballots that we're sending out through the mail, like I say, that have more security issues. So we're very proud of this. And the courthouse, actually, I don't know if anybody knows that here, but the first early voting site in the state was right here in Leon County courthouse. And election turnout by hour, the little message here is lunch breaks actually a good time to go vote. I was very surprised by this. Normally, we see a spike there, but it was strong in the morning and strong in the evening. Okay, so going forward, again, like I say, this was a very successful election, I think, statewide. The recounts, which I don't have any slides in here about the recounts, but Commissioner Maddox, thank you for your fortitude in staying with the whole recount process. It was a grueling task. You did, it was great, and you made it an enjoyable experience, I think, for all of us. It was really good. But, and we were very successful at that. However, five days of recounts is a tough road to hoe for anybody. And we had, like I say, the three statewide recounts, but also the city commission recount, and we were able to get it all done, machine and manual recounts, but there are better ways, and that's one of the things that we'll talk about briefly here. So, one thing we did discover during our machine recount that one of our older high-speed tabulators, well, actually, both of them, had a hiccup there, and there was about an hour of downtime. So we were fairly close to maybe some of the problems that we saw down south. All of our equipment is being stressed, and so we are asking for, and hoping to be able to purchase another high-speed tabulator. I've contacted the vendor, we've got our eyes on a slightly used one that'll save us about $20,000, so around $65,000, I think, is our budget ask coming forward. But that extra redundancy should enable us to do any more machine recounts quickly, and if we have multi-page ballots, the number of ballots we have to tabulate during an election cycle for vote by mail is very high, so that gives us a nice failover and redundancy in the system. Also, moving forward, support for Spanish-language materials, including staffing opportunities. We're trying to hire more Spanish-speaking poll workers. Our success in that has been somewhat limited, but we're trying to expand our resources to get the word out that we have a requirement for that. We were able to have in our phone bank several people on staff and then in key positions throughout our, throughout our polling places, we did have Spanish-language translators and English-speaking, Spanish-speaking folks to get help voters out. Very limited use or access to that. We had about, I think, a little over a dozen voters that actually needed to use that. But again, I think our resources we're putting out there are very effective, and the court case is still open as to what that's going to look like in the future elections, whether we have to have, there's a potential for needing full bilingual ballots, and that's going to be, I think, a shocker to everyone, that anybody that gets a vote by mail ballot or goes to a polling place, there's a possibility that every piece of paper will have Spanish and English versions of the ballot on it. And that's what causes some of the problems down south. They've got a big ballot, two or three pages, but when they add Spanish or Spanish and Haitian Creole, suddenly they go, they go from a three-page or a two-page to three-page ballot to a six- or nine-page ballot, and that's what causes a lot of lines, a lot of logistical hurdles. This election, we had to machine recount 141,000 ballots. If that was a Spanish and English ballot, that would have been 280,000 pieces of paper going through our machines. And that gets, that's a dramatic increase in the logistical hurdles that we have to overcome. And let's see, what we've been pushing for the last three years through the legislature, and I'm proud to say it grew, it began here in Leon County. We have an audit system we designed here in Leon County with my predecessor, Ian Sancho. He put me in charge of that in 2009, and over the last 10 years, we were able to design a system with an outside vendor that is state-approved now and is being actually used in other states throughout the nation to do audits and recounts, and in even some locations, it's their primary voting system. We're trying to get the authorization to use that system that we currently use for audits, and like I say, is state-certified. We're trying to have legislation that will allow us to use that for recounts. Because essentially, as we go through an election, we are actually recounting all of our ballots every single day through the election cycle with our audit system. And so what we've done, in effect, is by the end of the election, we've done the full tabulation, but we also have done a recount. And if we are allowed to push that button and see essentially what are now audit numbers, approach those as if they were recount numbers, we could validate our elections much, much more quickly, a matter of hours, instead of, it took us 1,600 man-hours over five days, 53 people working overtime, and the canvassing board to get this recount done, when we could literally have done it, as Commissioner Maddox saw, in a matter of hours. It's very powerful, very transparent. You can zero in on those, what I call the needles in the haystack, of the ballots. The reason for recounts is you're looking for missed voter intent in the initial election and the tabulation. So you, at some point, you have to look at the overvotes and the undervotes, but this software allows you to see that visually immediately. It sorts through all of the digital images and brings those to the fore, and you can assess those very quickly. And if you need to refer back to the paper, it's very easy to, based on the naming of that ballot, to go back to the boxes where they're stored and pull that piece of paper out and validate. So it's pretty remarkable, you have to see it to believe it. And so we're hoping that we can get your all's support to lobby the legislature. Our association as a whole for all the 67 supervisors of elections is endorsing this legislation. It's the first time we were able to get them to buy into it. I think they saw the power of it and the advantages and how it can leverage a lot of, or solve a lot of the problems and leverage this technology to make recounts much, much Let's see, other standard tasks, as we saw from Hurricane Michael, we're, there's, you can never be completely prepared for any kind of emergency, so we're trying to improve our emergency response readiness. We've got two elections that popped up, Halsey-Bishir's, House 9. He was appointed by Governor DeSantis, I think, to head Department of Business and Professional Regulation. So our South and Western precincts, I think there's five precincts total, have an election, I believe it's April 9th and June 20, or June 18th, if needed, for the June 18th election. So those are coming up, very small footprint in Leon County, but our surrounding neighbors are very involved in this election, as are we. It's an important election, so we'll be calling our canvassing board soon. And then Amendment 4, that's relatively big news, I think, everywhere in Florida. I think we've kind of led the way in that. We, I think, made the message clear that there was no implementing language needed by the legislature. Really, Amendment 4 essentially just gives, restores rights for individuals that never had those rights restored before. In the United States, there was roughly 6 million people who were convicted of felonies that did not have the right to vote restored. Of those 6 million, 1.5 million were right here in Florida. So that's a huge percentage of this population. Given the restrictions on Amendment 4, there are about 1.2 of those, 1.2 million of those folks should have their rights restored automatically, pending some decisions about financial obligations and that kind of thing. But in general, all supervisors currently are moving forward as if they had their rights restored. There are no prosecutions if someone inadvertently registers a vote and then later on it's found that they were, did not have their rights restored because of maybe a decision by the legislature on what constitutes satisfying your term of sentencing. So there's a few kinks to be worked out and uncertainties, but the state attorneys throughout the state are adopting the same position we have, that absence of complete evidence of fraud, nobody's going to be prosecuted. Anybody that might end up in court would be a supervisor for taking someone off the rolls based upon a preponderance of evidence, and then somebody challenges that legal definition as instituted by the legislature, you know, and saying that's not, that goes contrary to the U.S., to the Florida Constitution. So if anybody's going to end up in the courts about this to establish new law here, it's going to be the supervisors, and, you know, that's part of our job. We have to follow the law, and if somebody takes me to court and makes a law that change, that's, you know, that's part of the job. So we're very happy about how Amendment 4 is moving forward right now. And, you know, our continual plug, we try to always lead the way in innovation, transparency, and accessible elections, and that's what we're going to continue doing in the future. So with that, I'll close, glad I didn't take up too much time, and open for any questions you have.
Yeah, we have, first off, thank you so much for the information, and secondly, I'm glad you're here and not in jail.
Thank you.
But we do have several commissioners in queue to speak. We'll start with Commissioner Maddox, then Commissioner Proctor, Commissioner Minor, and Commissioner Deluge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mark, first of all, we spent a lot of time together. I know the process that you go through here in Leon County. I wanted to commend you on how streamlined and efficient that process is here. I think this, I've said it before, I think it's a model for the state. A lot of people across the state can learn a lot from what we do here. So you run a very efficient office, and we are proud to call you our supervisor.
Thank you.
Couple of things here. First thing is the team lobbying efforts. You asked that we support you in that. What kind of support are you looking for from us?
For the lobbying?
Yes, sir.
Well, if we could get a statement from you all in support of this, especially given your own personal experience in reviewing, you've done, gone through the audit process with us, and you can see how transparent that is and how efficient it's done. So any kind of words of endorsement to this, I think, would go a long way to show that it's not just, you know, a supervisor election who's trying to maybe, not that we aren't, but trying to cut corners or something like that. Until you see it, you don't understand how powerful this tool is. So we're trying to get words of support from people that have actually worked through the process with us.
Thank you, sir. I also wanted to commend you on your Amendment 4 implementation. I think you were one of the first supervisors across the state to go ahead and implement, regardless of what the state was going to do. The voter spoke on that, and those folks should be allowed to vote, and I'm glad you made that decision, so thank you for that as well. The tabulator, the high-speed tabulator, is it already within your budget to be able to purchase that?
I think we've put it in the budget to do that. Frankly, we probably have some leftover funds this year that we can maybe, before October 1st, purchase that. I've been in discussions with the vendor to try and find the best way to move forward with that. These devices are somewhat limited in availability, but they, like I say, they do have some that they put out there for certification efforts around the nation. So they haven't been used real heavily, but they, they, they come with a full warranty, and they should be a good deal.
For the commissioners and public at large, we've never seen it, these tabulators, they're not, an extra one for us is not luxury. It's a necessity. I mean, we absolutely need one. If you look at what Mark said, now we're at 213,000 eligible voters, we're considered a major, Mark, as far as voting is concerned here in Leon County, and so it's time for us to take that step. So I think that's a good expenditure on your part. Mr. Chair, what I would like to do is maybe ask for a resolution supporting the, supporting the existing certified auditing system that Mr. Early talked about, to come from this board in support of what they're lobbying for at the state. I'd like to make that motion if I can.
Yeah, Mr. Administrator.
Commissioners, by all means, but we have on item, let me see, your first general business item on your legislative report, we've contemplated your adoption of the supervisor of elections request to be formally adopted as part of your legislative priorities. And with that direction and with that action, we will do everything we can to assist throughout the legislative process.
Great. I also like for a resolution to come out as well, come with that as well.
All right, so we have a motion for a resolution, correct?
Yes, sir.
Right. Now do we have a second for that? Okay. All those in favor of a resolution supporting the expenditure of the, I believe you called it a high-speed tabulator, right?
No, not tabulator. This is the support of the existing audit system that they've invented with the supervisor's office. It's very efficient. I mean, if you hadn't seen this thing, it's pretty awesome. I mean, we spent hours recounting votes, but they can put a screen up, and within seconds you can see all of the votes that were questionable and overvotes.
Commissioner Myers on point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick bit of discussion before we go down to the motion, please. Supervisor Early, just real quick, I saw very briefly.
Getting used to that. I saw very briefly the audit system that you're talking about during the recount during the primary election, and not as much nearly as what Commissioner Maddox saw, but it was very impressive. I mean, you could zero in, see the, the image of the hard copy ballot, which is terrific. Just really quickly, though, before we vote on that, what does the state certification entail? You mentioned that other states have already certified the audit system that you've developed. What is, what does that entail? Do they look at the vendor's source code, or what type of testing is done? Actually, that exact thing. It is put through essentially the exact same testing and rigors of a standard vote tabulation system. The only difference is it doesn't have the precinct-based tabulation component, because this is all done within our office. And it's already been, this source code's already been reviewed and certified by the state for this. So the language you're looking for, and actually, when you, you look at the language of the amendment, it's somewhat technical. It's really changing the definition, or equating an automatic tabulating system, which is what our audit system is called, because the background software does the exact same thing as the vote tabulation system. So it's bringing those up on an even par, the mass ballot count test and all, I've done a lot of certifications, it's very technical, but that process has already been completed here in Florida.
Okay.
So it's just a matter of the statutory change allowing us to use this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I think we want to dispense with the motion first. There's still several commissioners in queue to speak. Is that on, we'll go ahead and take the commissioner comments before we vote, right, correct? All right. Commissioner Proctor.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Early, I want to compliment you on running, being an outstanding supervisor of elections. And for some reason, Florida happens often in election cycles to make national news for its ineffective supervisors. I went to the federal court hearing pertaining to the ousted supervisor in Broward County. I wanted to hear the facts presented before Judge Walker, and it made me reflect with renewed confidence in you and what you do. I know that you had to do a recount, and it was interesting that people were wondering, because we had two or three close races here, and I was able to say that Mark Early is not, is not going to be three or four votes different than what came in. The recount is not going to move because Early is that tight. He's never late. And I was aware of your technical gifts in that office. And I was aware of your technical gifts in that office during the previous administration, and I recognized then that you were the wind behind the wings of the previous administrator. You're just low-key, sharp as all giddy out. The early voting piece, which this commission had some trepidation with endorsing, has proven to be everything that we wanted it to be, because it now, more people are voting early than on the day of. And I think that that's spectacular, given that this has probably occurred only in about four, this may be the fourth early vote cycle, and we expand it. I would be curious, just for information's sake, for instance, on one of the pages, for a specific breakdown to know the performance of the early voting sites. And of the 40.8% of the voters, would you be willing to supply this commission with the specific performance of each of the early voting sites? That could be instructive to us. I want also to note that with the new data piece and apparatus of tabulator that you've invented, will that be a windfall for your office once it goes widespread and everybody buys it?
You're talking about the audit system, if that becomes the recount methodology? Well, in the initial phase, it's going to be an optional, and actually, I need to be careful of my words here, because we need support. It is envisioned as an optional methodology for recounts. I think once people see it in action in the more broad spectrum, that they'll understand that it has a lot more usability other than just auditing an election. It allows you to make sure that you're not losing ballots or misplacing ballots through the whole election cycle, because you're doing very detailed inventory every single day throughout the whole early voting period, and matching that up. So as far as the windfall, yeah, I think currently, by virtue of the fact that we already have this system, I think we've got enough equipment to make it work going forward as the recount tool. I think we're poised very well. As the county that really initially started working on this, I think we do have a reduced rate that we're paying for this process, and the ability to use it for recounts, I think the primary windfall would be that we don't have to spend that much money, you know, that 1,600 hours of man-hours in overtime, when everybody's already stressed from the election just having passed, to have better elections in a more cost-effective manner.
Right. Well, I think that to the extent that there may be any profits gained from this new approach, that our county attorney or your attorney ought to do everything to streamline that a return or license on this is attached, and that we are paid for your brilliance, Mr. Early, unless that comes in as a bonus to you. And that would be good, too. There were felon rights. You were outstanding when the date, I believe it was January the 8th.
Yes, sir.
That felon rights came on board, and you were not a wimp at all. And I appreciate that you saw it like an eagle, and not like a fluttering hummingbird. And that was major, because it was very important that somebody would set a tone and not retrench in all of the howling winds of those who were opposed and tried to create that the date was not what the word said on the ballot, blah, blah, blah. But you took a strong and a clear stand, and I, as one commissioner, really respect and appreciate that you set a clear tone here in the state of Florida about allowing people to have their rights restored. When you use the word automatic, automatic restoration, what does the word automatic mean? Does it mean automatically that they receive, felons receive a card and don't have to take any steps? Does it simply mean that without any further ado, felons can come to register to vote at a supervisor's office? What does the word automatic entail?
Yeah, in essence, it's the latter of those two. So someone that's convicted of a felony at the time of completion of their sentence, they do not, they had not had their right to vote, their eligibility for that had been taken away by the virtue of being convicted of the felony. Once they complete their sentencing, that's where the automatic part comes in. As soon as they've completed their sentencing, they're eligible to get registered and vote again. So that's the automatic part. There is still the step of coming either to my office, or going to one of our outreach events, or going online, online voter registration, or when you go to get your license at Highway Safety Motor Vehicles. At those different points in time, you can then access the voter registration system in Florida and become a registered voter.
Is there any legislation that's been filed to challenge the position of what was on the ballot?
No, no. The only, what I have heard talk of is, let me explain just real briefly, I'll try to be brief, because I get in the weeds quick, I'm an engineer, that's what we do. But, so getting registered to vote and then your eligibility, so that's the first step, is just getting registered to vote. So your rights have been restored automatically by virtue of completing your sentencing. You come and fill out the exact same voter registration form that everybody fills out. Number two says, I am not a convicted felon, or if I am, my rights have been restored. You check that, and it was the same sentence from before January to currently, and then you fill out the, you sign the oath at the bottom. You're a registered voter at that point. The second part becomes, comes in when the state, as has always been the process, every 30 days, they compare the voter registration rolls with the felon's lists, and they look for matches or potential matches. And if they see a potential match, in the previous way, it was okay, make sure the ID is the same, and then you go to the clemency review board and see who, see if that person had their rights restored, because that was the only way you could get your rights restored. So it was a pretty easy process for that second step that everybody goes through, including myself. We were part of that review. That process has become, without a doubt, much more difficult for the Division of Elections and under the Secretary of State's office to do that research, because you still have to make the identity match, which sometimes can be difficult. But then you have to determine what type of felony were they convicted of, how does that comport with Amendment 4's language? And then have they finished their sentencing guidelines? And there's some debate, as is being discussed in the legislature and certainly amongst supervisor elections, there's some uncertainty, and even with state attorney's offices and the clerk of the courts, because they're a font of a lot of this information for people trying to do this research. Does financial obligations imposed by a court, is that part of your sentencing terms or not? And there's some, I think, valid debate. My understanding at first was that, yes, that would obviously be part of your sentencing terms. But when you look at the definition of probation, I think it's in 894 or 984, somewhere in the statutes, it says that it gives, defines probation, and it says terms and then obligations. And when it's talking about the terms, we're talking about the supervision with a probation officer or parole officer, and then the obligations starts referring to the financial obligations that were imposed. And so Amendment 4 talks about the terms of your sentencing, and when you get down to there, that's when these fine points, so I think the legislature is definitely going to have a role in how that investigative process can be conducted by the Secretary of State's Office, the Division of Elections, and maybe who is going to be tasked with doing that investigation. Hopefully, there'll be some data brought back together. But moving forward, you know, I think eventually that's all going to be ironed out by the courts.
Super. April 9th, is that a closed primary?
We will know on the 14th. Qualifying ends on February 14th, so it might, I'm not sure yet. We've got four filed Republicans. There's talk of a Democratic candidate likely going to file, but we haven't heard for sure.
Good, okay. Thank you very much. My last ask is, if you're able to inform our board of the processes for referendum items being placed on 2020 ballot pertaining to the city of Tallahassee, and how does it work, and what do we have to do, or is that a city-controlled effort to foster referendum on the police review board and a city utility review board of citizens? I'm curious about the one, two, threes of how you do that, and if you would help us, I would be very much appreciative.
Yeah, I think that's handled primarily with, through city charter. The provisions they laid out within their city charter, there's some overlying but very broad statutes that govern that at the state level. So essentially, that's all handled within the city charter. And we, I was very on top of that process earlier this year, but since then, I would need to review that to give you a good full report on that.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Deluge, Commissioner Dozier, and then Commissioner Minor, and we will vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mark, I just want to say congratulations. It's nice not to have you in the press, and with all the things going on around the state, it was nice to read it, how well and how efficient you seem to manage things. I had my differences when Ian was here, but I think he was one of the best supervisor of elections we've ever had, and you have stepped up very well. So thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mark, and Mr. Supervisor, I should say.
Mark's good.
Yes. Echoing the comments already, you all did a fantastic job, as always, nothing surprising. It does occur to me that you prepare well for disaster or elections, and you can handle the influx and other things like that. So I think we've proven that time again. So thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Maddox, again, for stepping up as chairman. This is something that we could perhaps delve into later, but we did have a conversation in our retreat about looking at our libraries a little different, and there was a thought that came out of presentation about library cards and things like that. This may seem like a stretch, but I think you just mentioned that getting your driver's license is a way that young people can register to vote. I knew one 18-year-old recently who just magically got his card in the mail, and the parents didn't know why, but I'm pretty sure that's probably what happened. Is that right?
I'm sure they preregistered and, or went to the Highway Safety, got the license, and at that point, they preregistered and forgot.
And forgot about it. So I just picked up on the 4,600-plus new voters, and if there was anything that we could do as we look at expanding civics and things like that, if we do any of that with our libraries, I'm just wondering if there is a way to help you step up that communication with young people, and I would love to explore some of those options going forward. So just wanted to mention that, and if there were any ideas, Mr. County Administrator, that we could explore later, I'd love to hear those.
I would love to do that. Yeah, there's some creative initiatives throughout the state. One thing I've been tempted to do, haven't done it, has a cost, but every time we get a new register, voter registered, to send them a thank you card, a congratulations card, especially the ones that preregistered when they turn 18. Send them a birthday card, and you're now registered to vote. So we've been looking at some of those kind of things. So, yeah, I'd be very happy to take part in any of those creative solutions.
I love that idea. That's great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Minor, and then we will move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Early, just a quick question and then a quick comment. The breakdown of voters by voting method, I thought was really impressive. You know, I'm not the expert that you are, but, you know, I have my reservations with vote by mail as well, compared to some of the other options available. Great percentage numbers for Leon County. Statewide, do you know offhand what the breakdown is, roughly speaking?
Yes, it's definitely stilted more towards vote by mail. I think the early voting numbers are much lower. There's one big county that sort of does early voting, but it's more like a drop site for vote by mail, and that might elevate those early voting numbers. But I think essentially, vote by mail and the early voting could be switched, and likely the election day is somewhat lower.
Good, great, thanks. And then just another comment to echo my colleagues here. I mean, thank you for your leadership on Amendment 4. I read your comment and your direction shortly after the amendment passed, and thought to myself, we're fortunate to have another strong leader in our supervisor elections office here in Leon County, so thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Commissioner.
All right, thank you. We have a motion on the floor made by Commissioner Maddox for a resolution in support of both the audit and any subsequent legislative requests, seconded by Commissioner Lindley. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed by the same sign. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Thank you.
And if I may, Chairman, I'd just like to thank the commission and the staff for the great working relationship between our offices. I think it allows us to do a lot of creative things, and I appreciate the trust you all put in my office. I put that same trust in my staff, and I'm glad we're performing well for you. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I think we will now, I think our guest showed up from the Steele family, if they'll make their way to the podium, we will have a special proclamation from Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess about two weeks ago, 18 days or so after we requested the highway naming for Reverend Dr. Steele, we were able to execute that right on Orange Avenue, between Orange Avenue and Monroe to Orange Avenue in Bluestone. That day, we talked about a proclamation, but today we're actually going to present one to the family. The proclamation reads, "Whereas the Reverend Dr. Charles Kenzie Steele, Sr., was born on February 17th, 1914, in Bluefield, West Virginia. Whereas C.K. Steele graduated from the Gary Colored High School, Gary, West Virginia, earned a BA degree from Morehouse College, Atlanta, Georgia, and was the first African-American to be conferred with a Doctor of Humane Letters degree from Florida State University. And whereas C.K. Steele pastored churches in Tacoa, Georgia, and Montgomery, Alabama, before accepting the Pastorial, the Pastorate of Bethel Missionary Baptist Church in Tallahassee, Florida in 1952. And whereas C.K. Steele led the successful protests of desegregating Tallahassee City buses in 1956, he co-founded the Southern Christian Leadership Council, or Conference, in 1957 as the executive vice president alongside his friend, Dr. Martin Luther King, Jr. And whereas C.K. Steele was an unrelenting advocate for civil rights and an unbeating crusader against poverty, oppression, racism, and bigotry. He participated as a national leader in many of the, many of the events of the civil rights movement, including the Albany Movement, Birmingham Movement, the March on Washington, St. Augustine Movement, and the Selma to Montgomery March. Whereas Leon County is proud to call the Reverend C.K. Steele an icon of our community. Whereas Leon County supported 2017 legislations seeking to designate State Road 371, 373, Orange Avenue, and between State Road 263, Capital Circle Southwest, and State Road 61, Monroe Street, as C.K. Steele Memorial Highway in honor of Dr. Steele's courageous work and influence during the civil rights movement. Now therefore being resolved by the Board of County Commissioners in Leon County, Florida, that we designate Leon County's portion of Orange Avenue as C.K. Steele Memorial Highway. This is signed by the chair, attested to by the county administrator, and also signed by the rest of the commission."
I just want to say thank you again, on behalf of the Steele family, for this wonderful tribute and memorial to our Father and to his work and legacy. We want to thank you for the things that you're doing for this community. He would be right here cheering on what's being done with the Fourth Amendment and encouraging us to go forward and get as many people registered so that we can change this community into the beloved community that he and Dr. King worked toward. It's an extreme honor and a joy for our family, and we thank you again. And I do want to say thank you to this young man, Delatory Hollinger, who is a walking encyclopedia of history, and we love him dearly. Amen.
Thank you so much for coming out tonight and joining us. At this time, we'll have a presentation and an impact report from the DOMI Educational Entrepreneurial Community for 2018. Mr. Administrator.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. This item seeks your acceptance of DOMI's FY18 report, and as the chairman noted, Executive Director Antonio Montoya is here, and I note that he's joined by, it looks like, a couple of DOMI Station's board members, and we're happy to have you here. And with that, welcome, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Administrator, and thank you, Commissioners, for having me here. It's an honor, actually, to be here, and again, we are new incoming chairwoman, Eme, and our founder and previous chair, David Lawson. It's been five years. It's been interesting to see. I was lucky enough to be selected to come and join DOMI as executive director almost a year ago. And as I've been going through the documents and learning how this came to be, it was interesting to see the vision and the risk that you guys took as a county to basically support, in a way, very much as... a county to basically support, in a way, very much as an angel investor would, a fledging idea of an incubator that was needed in the county and the city. And it's been five years. Five years is an interesting mark for any startup. Not many startups reach five years, and we're there. Our mission continues to be to maximize the human potential of our members and the people that come to seek our services through entrepreneurship and innovation. I think it's a broader vision than we had before, and I'm going to explain a little bit what I mean by that. Right now, at Domi, there's over 50 companies represented in our members. Some are national brands like Salesforce or Microsoft. Some are locally grown companies like Slash Prime Tech or Sustainable Tallahassee. We have 123 active coworking members. Many of them are entrepreneurs and their staff, as well as freelancers, and there's a lot of those, and they're becoming more and more. Many of them are also remote workers, working remotely for some of those big companies. And these are people that are interesting from an economic development perspective, because those are people that are earning New York or San Francisco wages, but they're spending those dollars right here in Tallahassee. Those people are looking for an environment that is similar to the environment they left in their headquarters, and that's where they find at Domi. In addition to that, we have quite a bit of students at Domi, but I think that there is, this is an interesting reflection, when you see that there's 24, so it's basically a fifth of the population at Domi is students. So, it's not an all-student population. Actually, there's quite a few people that are, look a lot like you guys and me than, you know, young students from, in college. One thing that has started to happen at the middle of last year is that we were at full capacity. So, we had to sadly see some people leave because we couldn't serve them anymore, because we couldn't support the growth of their companies, or because we, quite frankly, didn't have any open offices for them to take. So, that is something that is starting to become a pattern, not one that we like, not to be able to serve, but it's interesting to see the growth. In addition to that, we're becoming sort of a community of communities. We serve as a platform for a lot of different initiatives in the city and projects that do anything from supporting women's entrepreneurs and women innovation, like Women's Wednesdays, the Tally Soup, which is more about community projects that wouldn't otherwise be funded through community sport. And many of these events happen really with very little of our intervention. It's not really our initiative, it's someone else's initiative. So, we're turning Domi more into a platform that allows these people to host those events. And it resulted in a significant number of events, and quite frankly, a significant traffic that comes to the Domi, and that allows them to engage and connect, which is important. In particular, with the OEV, we have done several joint activities and projects, and you can see them here listed, anything from economic development to community development and innovation. As we said, you know, we are trying to double down on that. We think that it's a great way to leverage the investment that you guys have made by allowing other community innovators to take advantage of the resource that Domi Station has. Today, this afternoon, we're launching the Campaign for the Community. This is in conjunction with Cona and Sustainable Tallahassee. And our idea is to reach out to the South Side, make sure the South Side understands what Domi provides, and how they can do, how they can make use of our resources, and also take advantage of the services that we provide. That is not the only one. I mean, we're also working with FAMU in a very deliberate way with the Innovation Hub and the Jim Moran School, as well as the TCC Spark. So, we're trying again to reach out to make sure that the resource is leveraged and is utilized in as much as possible. In addition to that, I mean, I'm an old manager and entrepreneur. I like numbers. I like to drive organizations' by numbers. So, we are instituting performance-based management in everything that we do. So, a lot of these numbers come from dashboards that we have created for internal purpose. And also, you know, we eventually plan to publish them and keep them up to date on a regular basis. We had the opportunity to get into a very interesting project. One of the things that I say about Domi in the past five years is that we have tried a lot of different things. As a startup, we have tested different opportunities and tried to make the most of them. One was Iowa Avenue, and you know, we were called to help with this. We set up a very good project in a very short time. I had three cohorts, 27 students, nine of them were placed or got promotions based on their participation in the program. We also learned many lessons out of that, and we are currently evaluating options to make it a sustainable venture. But it's again, something that we're very proud of participating in. One of the things that I want to show you is, and it's in the report that is attached to the agenda, right? This is Megan to your, I guess.
Good luck, you, right?
And Megan, she was a stewardess. She was, I'm not a stewardess, she was, God, she was working at a restaurant. And she saw the announcement for Iowa Avenue. She took the class. She quit her job, decided to be in a committee with other developers, and joined Ross, who's on the left, who is one of our entrepreneurs that actually started a company, first coworking, and now has a little office where Megan and his wife work. That's the kind of dynamic that happens at Domi. That's the power of working together with people that are like-minded and creating networks from which opportunities can present. So, I just wanted to note this, because this is the story that repeats over and over, and this is what I want you guys to understand. This is what we do. It takes a little bit of time, but that's really what it is. And when you look at CoddleSoft, Divi App, Catalina, Vale, which are all companies that started at Domi, if you think about how that started, it started like that, right? They met, coworking, so they find they're good, doing projects together. Eventually, they decided to partner, and then they grow. So, right now, we have 33 companies that are reporting activity. Some of them are on our traditional guest-star project. We have a pilot for a new project called Scale Up, a new program for incubation. The idea is, we want to separate education from incubation, and this is in part based on the feedback from our own members, but also observing the growth in the ecosystem. When we started five years ago, there were not many other programs. Now, there's programs at TCC, there's programs at Jim Moran School, there's programs at Innovation Park. We want to minimize the duplication, and we want to fill the gaps where they are. The other thing that we're trying to do is, we're trying to make sure that we build a program structure that can scale. And for that reason, we are separating the education piece into modules, and then we are making the Scale Up, which is the incubation part, commitment-based program based on mentorship. And we're going to talk a little bit about that in a second. Another thing that I want you to think about is that we still have, are dealing with companies that started with Domi right from the start, and they're still here. That is an interesting thing, because sometimes those relationships are not as quick as we will like. Sometimes those people come back, like Divi App Socks, right? They left, and they did their thing, and then suddenly, they had trouble with different kinds of growth, and they come back to us for help. The other thing that is interesting is, yeah, we have companies that move away, like Flymouth, that went back to South Florida, but we landed three new companies that came from outside. I just came from Columbia, and there's one company of Frontline that is interested in relocating to Florida. He's in Miami right now, and I say, well, once you check the price of the real estate down in Miami and the traffic, you might want to talk to us, because it's a tech ed startup, and this is the perfect location for an education-based startup. So, just a thought. Again, this is another story. This is our reported data in 2018. This was by September. So, unfortunately, we don't have the huge shot that was Divi App during their Christmas season. Basically, they pretty much blew these numbers out of the water. I think they sold close to $8 million last year, and they had like 90 people just by themselves employed at peak during their peak season. So, again, this is another great story of people meeting at Domi, starting at FSU, in their entrepreneurial program at the time, which was, I think, a handful of people, based on what I talked to them, and then meeting someone else at Domi, meeting Jason, I'm sorry, Spencer. So, they met at Domi, and then they clicked, and they finally, you know, came up with a great idea after basically working for three years. So, that's why, on this 2019 plan, what we want to do is to focus a little bit more on self-landing, seeing what we can do to land those startups that are moving from high-rent areas. It's happening all around the country, if you look at it. The other part, again, is what we said, we're breaking, get started apart, so we can make it more scalable, launching our Scale Up incubation, and then there will be, you know, some announcements coming up very soon on that. One of the first things that we're doing, and you see Susan Fiorito, why do you see Dr. Susan Fiorito there? Well, we have been partnering with Jim Moran School. We're also partnering with the Innovation Park and the TCC Spark Program to have a citywide mentor network. We're going to manage that network. We have already established all the infrastructure to do the basics of that. And the idea is to allow us to leverage more effectively the resources we have in Tallahassee. Those entrepreneurs that were successful, that have been successful, that want to give back, they probably want to do it without spending too much time being hounded by different programs. So, we're maximizing their time, making it more efficient, and allowing them to connect with the right entrepreneur at the right time. Last but not least, our alumni program is important. I mean, when you look at the success at Vale, or the just-announced Catalina Cafe merging with Red Eye, these are entrepreneurs that are ready to give back, that can help us guide the entrepreneurs that are coming. So, we want to make sure that we keep them engaged, because again, engagement is what leads to networks. Networks is that leads to new ventures. It happens all the time. That's the way it's been forever, right? So, we can do all this, and it's great, but to do this right, we want to do it sustainable. You guys have made a significant investment and commitment to us, and we have, I think, done a pretty good job with those funds that you have provided and the use of the space. And what we are trying to figure out is a way to be able to continue our operation in a sustainable way. We think that we have found a way to become sustainable from operations so that when we get grants and other additional funding, it can be implemented to grow new programs as opposed to pay for the operation, which is what we've been trying to do. And I want to highlight as well that there's going to be a big change coming up. This is not the same world, and it's not the same city that existed when we started at Domi. When we started at Domi, we were talking about Divi App Socks. There were five kids in the social entrepreneurship program at FSU. When I was talking to Susan Fiorito, there's like 500, sometimes I hear larger numbers of students that are engaged in entrepreneurship. That is a virtual tidal wave that is coming our way. There's 900 people relocating to Florida daily that appeared in the Florida Trends Magazine in October. Why? Because of those high-rent areas, right? Also, we're seeing a lot of funders that are not just young. These are people that are returning, you know, they're third acts, you know. So, we have people like Chustalahassee trying to target those people. We also have people that are being, you know, replaced by technology, which is going to, is a trend that's going to continue. Some statistics say that there's going to be 73 million jobs that are going to be killed by automation by 2030, right? We've all heard about it. You've probably heard about what happened in Wisconsin. You know, I think it was Foxconn that promised thousands of jobs in a factory, and then said, oops, my bad. Now, it's all going to be machines, because really, it's too expensive to do with humans. Guess what? Entrepreneurship is not going to be only a mechanism to create new wealth by creating startups. It's also a workforce development play, because the jobs of the future are jobs of people that can create new stuff. The product managers of the future, right? Those are the people that are interested, that are going to be interesting to brands like Salesforce, like Microsoft, like Google. So, that's why we have our tenex vision. So, our vision is saying, we see this tidal wave, it's a great opportunity, and we want to take advantage of it, and we want to ask you to continue to join us collaborating for this new vision for growth and sustainability. I have been doing a big study on how can we grow in a sustainable way, and we think that what we need to do is to grow our space to roughly 24,000 square feet, so that we can have an event that is specifically designed for large events. If you think about Hack FSU started at Domi but couldn't stay at Domi, because it's so big, it's grown so big that Domi cannot hold it. This is one of many events that, or of many initiatives that have suffered the same thing. After all, you know, when you look at Domi, right, it's that tiny warehouse right there. It's only 7,000 square feet. The other thing that we're doing is, again, we just don't want to turn people away. I mean, if somebody's going to land in Tallahassee and they need a self-landing place full of developers and designers and tech-minded people, we want to make sure that they can join the community immediately, get connected, and start making, creating those networks that are going to create value in the future. We don't want to turn them away. We don't want to have them in the city but disconnected. So, that's why we want a space where we can have 50 offices, where people can come in, immediately engage, and stay. And then, last but not least, if we have that, then we have a sustainable model out of coworking leases. We can pay all our base operation costs out of that. In addition to that, because we will have a larger event space, and we can do bigger things, then we can start attracting the kinds of brands outside from Tallahassee, like the Googles and the Salesforce's and the Facebooks, as regular sponsors, as well as, again, energize our alumni and local business community. And yeah, you know, we can also go after grants, but, you know, with a much more solid grant. So, I really like to end this by saying again, we recognize the vision you guys had, and we would like to renew that collaboration to help us grow entrepreneurship in Tallahassee and take it into the next phase. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We have NQ Mary Ann, excuse me, Commissioner Lindley and Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you very much, Mr. Montoya. It's great to have you here today. I just first want to say thanks to Commissioner Dozier, because I think she has been leading the charge on Domi from, I think you were chairman when we cut the ribbons down there. I can't believe it's been five years. A couple of things come to mind. One, I think you said that some of the people who have been there since you opened the doors, is that a good thing, or is that sort of like having a 25-year-old still living at home? I mean, I kind of thought you want to launch people and have them move on.
So, that's the interesting thing about a startup committee, right? If we had an innovation district, if we had a place where there's, you know, the business doesn't have to leave all the way to the northeast side of town on Highway 10, right, then it would be okay if they could stay nearby, right? So, in most cities where you see an entrepreneurial ecosystem, it's very tight, right? I mean, you go to Palo Alto, I don't remember the street, it's a little street, you know, where everybody is and everybody meets. When you go to Chattanooga, it's the innovation, it's called Innovation District, right? And it's like eight blocks where everybody fits together. So, unfortunately, we don't have that yet. So, some of those people that we have that are still there are interesting, because they bring a lot of value and validation to the people that are new.
So, part of your interest in having more So part of your interest in having more spaces actually because you are trying to create more of a district ultimately that will accommodate both the sort of senior citizens of Domi as.
That is, that is correct.
And I really appreciate the outreach effort that you're trying to do to get more diversity. I hope the, I think it's called the Campaign for Community, you're having an event tonight so that you can draw people who are maybe not so much aware of Domi and what it's doing. I hope that'll be a good program tonight. Is that, is that a part of a continuing effort? I see that one of your goals is to increase outreach and diversity.
That is correct. And actually, that, this particular initiative is by Kristic Henry, who's on our Board of Directors.
It's part of Kona too, I think.
Exactly. So Kona and Kristic is kind of like leading that effort, yes.
And finally, I thought I saw that the county have been paying for high-speed internet there and through 2018, are we still paying that or is that one of the, is that one of the issues that is going to come up in our budget or?
So the county has been paying, for the last cycle, it went down to twelve thousand dollars, so a thousand dollars a month. So the county is still contributing that, yes.
So does sustainability mean that you will break loose from county budgeting, county responsibilities or?
So what our goal is, if we can, if we can do this, one thing that we want to do is we want to stay in the same spot, right? I mean, when we started there, we're really, I mean, kind of like, we're like this pioneer in the area. I was looking at some of the aerial photography and, you know, there was no green eyes, there was no hotel, it was all a bunch of warehouses. The building that we have been working on, this program that was designed by Lewis and Woodcock, is meant to be a small footprint building and we could, and we would love to stay in the same complex if we could. The idea is if we can do something similar to what Innovation Park is trying to do for their incubator, right? Trying to get funding from federal sources, local sources to pay for the building and that way the building becomes our endowment. That's what's going to secure, I mean, all these operational costs by virtue of basically people paying leases. And what's interesting is we are developing a different kind of incubator, so they are focused on science, they, they need, they have very different needs, web labs, large spaces. What people want in our case is usually personal offices that are very, very small so they can put in their computer and their tech and keep it logged or sometimes take a call. And they want a lot of collaboration in open areas and that are flexible. So it's a different kind of building that complements really well what's already starting to happen at Innovation Park and that complements what is happening truly in this district and in the railroad area.
Well, thank you very much and good luck on all of these plans, I appreciate them very much. Thank you.
Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. Very robust report, you're first as executive director, so really appreciate you being here, Antonio. And it's been, I think you came about nine, ten months ago, is that right? Maybe last spring, so not quite a year yet on the job. And I really liked the way you framed Domi as a startup. I mean, hitting the five-year mark is significant. In our past conversations, but also today, I think what I draw out is refining Domi's mission. We did jump early, Mr. County Administrator, you did tour the state looking at a few different incubators and so we knew there was a space to get into. I think it's to the credit of all the type, all the different organizations to have built out the ecosystem so that Domi others can refine their mission. Would that be a fair assessment of what you've seen in the last five years that as the other programs have come up, you've been able to refine and find your niche a little bit more and the needs that currently exist?
Absolutely. I think that one of the things that was interesting is you come up with hypotheses when you start anything, right? And I think that we, some hypotheses were probably wrong, some hypotheses were probably right and we learned a lot. We were able to provide like a front door for entrepreneurship initially when there was no other options. As other entities in the community have started to engage, I think that that front door role is not as important. However, the role that is becoming evident is the landing pad role. We are, where, you know, once the students at FSU go through the program, they stop paying their dues because, you know, they graduated, guess what? They need a way, a place to land. Now, we want them to land in Tallahassee, not in Florida, in South Florida, right? So that's where we're becoming, that place where they can land. The problem is they, it's hard for them to expand now, right? So that's why, again, it's driven by the demand that we feel that we need to grow, otherwise we won't be as useful in this new expanded ecosystem. And again, I mean, all these other players are producing a lot of opportunity, so we just need to grow to meet the demand that is happening.
And Commissioner Lindley, your question about, thank you, Antonio, for that, whether or not businesses need to be launched, that's a good way to put it, the twenty-five-year-old still living in your house. We're hearing this on, from all different types of programs, that there is a bottleneck when it comes to the second stage, you know, space that startups could afford, that they're in growth, they've got employees and they may not fit in the real estate market that we have at other, you know, typical lease rates and things like that. So getting to your punchline here, so I know from past conversations, you've been thinking about different locations, you all have been working on funding, the board's very engaged. And I think in your list, there was corporate funding, other things like that, you're not focused exclusively on public involvement. Not to say that, you know, we don't anticipate there might be something, but looking at the property that you're on, there, I guess, my understanding, there hasn't been any real formal conversations. You've been doing all the work in-house at this point and whether it's the existing location or a different location, you all as an organization want to and need to expand for the sustainability for Domi's future, is that, that's right? That's what I'm hearing?
That is correct. And again, we appreciate a lot the partnership with the city and again, we wouldn't have, we would not have been able to do this without the warehouse, right? I think that, you know, what would be great would be to be able to continue in the same general vicinity. And again, you know, that'll be a great partnership opportunity if that is something that the county can continue to do because I think it's worked well. I think we've proven ourselves as good stewards of that investment, is a great way to leverage, you know, maybe some resources that you guys already have and again, double down on a successful project.
Mr. County Administrator, I guess I'm going to ask you a question here. Obviously, Antonio, the board have more work to do on their end. Is there an opportunity to have a conversation as we look at the Amtrak Building for Visit Tallahassee and others, at least to get into a general conversation with you and our staff and with Domi and would probably get into O E V about that location or others? And I'm not contemplating in this conversation, O E V kind of asked, that's a different pipeline, everything like that that we've seen in other areas, but just the property itself? And I think, I guess what I'm hearing is that's a decision whether or not it's even an opportunity to stay there that you all probably need to know as you move forward and look for fundraising in other areas. So do you think that that conversation could take place?
Yes, we'd be happy to work with Antonio on that. You know, we're very proud of Domi, we love the partnership and, you know, we're doing a lot of facilities planning down there now, as you mentioned, none of which contemplate displacing Domi, needless to say. But in terms of timeframe, their lease is up in May and so that gives us some time and we'll make sure we're back before the board with plenty of time. And in the meantime, we can continue our talks with Antonio and see where we are.
I think that would be great and the facilities and the space planning, if that site didn't work, we would need to contemplate something else as well. So do you need formal on that? Okay, so if you're going to bring it back to us in budget anyhow, I would just like to see kind of where those conversations go, understanding that you all have a lot of other details probably and things that you're working on as you move through this. So forgive me, Mr. Chair, for going on a little bit long because that piece of it here, this is, we've seen great progress with Domi over the last five years. To me, this is the first report, first update we've heard that is really looking at the sustainability of the organization in kind of a second stage. So I just come back to what I said at the beginning, that's really exciting and I would be remiss if I didn't say that our ability to attract talent, like someone who has worked at incubators before and we're seeing this in other organizations, is a good marker for how strong the ecosystem's going or is growing as well. So welcome to Tallahassee formally. I'm glad you and Ann are here. Thank you.
Glad to be here. Thank you.
Commissioner Proctor, then Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Chairman. Sir, I want to applaud the picture that you have on the projection or need from seven thousand to twenty-four thousand square feet. I also want to thank you for the pictures that you've sent, the aerial view of the three, I'm not sure what you call them. One is the train station and it has a tin top and Domi is a tin top and the other seems to be, Commissioners, that is, that's the one right there. There's no question that there needs to be a parking facility there at the bottom of the photo, back up in the cut. We need to look at having a parking facility there which accommodates that hotel on the left and the new hotel that's supposed to be built across the track, back up in the cut off of Fam U Way. These, this area is attracting a lot of traffic and we would be great urban planners if we looked at your pictures of projected look. And I think Commissioners, that we are, we should seize the moment and grow with Domi and we ought to sponsor and place a building there and modernize the railroad track building that's sitting there. We have, I think, we ask our sister Kerry Post to go down in that area, I believe, our tourism, ain't y'all going down there, that area? And, you know, you stepping from downtown to go down to these little buildings right here and it's not hot in today's contemporary age to look at. With the modernization, the kind of money, the kind of contemporizing of facilities around this hub, we, Commission, ought to capture the vision splendid and move forward with the energies that the gentleman's bringing to us and challenging us silently, quietly to see more of the area. I don't know if you all would want to co-locate with a police station, but there's a hundred and eighty thousand square feet that's supposed to be happening somewhere soon, that might be a possibility, don't rule it out. We have to look at this photograph and I can see, I can see your picture, I can see the county having a building or I see the county coexisting in a building with Domi. I see our tourist office with grandeur, an office, a space representative of what we do and what the capital city is. Yesterday, the new directive promote Florida tourism for the state was in front of the Commerce Committee, the Senate Commerce Committee. She was asked a question, so when we have a negative exposure to the state of Florida, how do we correct it? What do we do when Florida is cast in a negative light? What is a negative light? She was asked. And it was a phenomenal response in terms of her capturing the need for us to quickly get on top of our Florida game to continue attracting tourists in our area and that we have to pitch our story and tell our story and she really had command. And I think that for this area, Commissioners, the area that I think that Vince and his staff sort of teaspoon-fed me with respect to us giving, giving opportunity to Domi and letting them use that dirt and a little barn burnt out facility and giving them a chance there. And I think that staff should be commended. Now, there's a group that's going to, I think I saw, South Carolina, and I hope you all are traveling and if y'all ain't, get a ticket and go on to South Carolina and see what, how they do it up there. We went to Nashville a little bit ago and we was over at, what's that school in Nashville called? We went over there where they meet up, what's that, what's that school called? Vanderbilt, yeah. We went over there and they showed us a lot of stuff, but we want you to see that stuff, take some pictures and I think it's time, Commissioners, for us to put, take our foot off the brake and hit the gas and let's put some money down there, let's build a facility down there. There's energy that private sector is putting and that's what that building on the left is, a hotel. There's one down on the corner of Game Street, there's another hotel coming over off of Fam U Way. I think that we ought to get on board and do a little bit more. So I salute you, sir, and I do want to ask, there's no mention of Shop Tally in your, and we did a joint press conference, me and you.
Yes.
Down at South Monroe Street and Shop Tally did a lot to foster Women Wednesdays and y'all don't have their name here as a player. And I know just how much Shop Tally has their efforts extended to include the South Side's involvement and engagement, which I deeply appreciate and I hope that somehow they've not been left out or overlooked or.
So that was my editing mistake, but I didn't want it to look like NASCAR uniform. So unfortunately, we didn't feel all that and I guess Shop Tally's logo slipped out. But it is, again, they are, Shop Tally and Swell Coin are actually a Domi alumni and a member.
I just look for them and they're the group that I'm a little more familiar with and I didn't, on the achieving sustainability chart and you indicate that that's the revenue over time, I'm looking at Fam U. Fam U has been relative to the amount of time and relative to the other institutions, education institutions, they've been a strong player and it looks like in 2018, you've noted that they have been your second largest source of revenue. And I think that that is a basis to, I won't use the word leverage, but I will use the word to encourage other institutions to step up relative to, you know, to be balanced with our college communities using your site is what I'm saying.
Absolutely. The only thing and the caveat and the reason why we want to go the building route for sustainability is that the reality is, and you can see it on FSU, right? FSU started really strong until they build their own capacity, right? So we were supplying the capacity while they were building their own. We understand that that's what Fam U is doing as well and they have limited funding and they have grants and we're going to try to pursue those grants, but it's difficult and it's probably not a great idea to become a grant chaser because then eventually we're going to have to do whatever the grant says as opposed to what we know we need to do. So that's why having a solid foundation and in this case would be this building that will be used as our endowment, which will basically be leveraged in rental and membership fees for the members that are coming to the space. And that way, when we pursue grants jointly with FSU, Fam U or other partners, would be to develop new programs. So that's the concept and that's, and you are absolutely right, but I'm seeing the writing on the wall that that Fam U big piece is going to fade as soon as they, either the grant dries up or they are able to build their own group and then they need to really devote the funding to their group as opposed to external organizations.
Okay. Well, I know that, we heard their president say, and speak of his commitment while we were in Nashville, of commitment to DOMI and those efforts. So maybe a conversation to ensure continued support may be warranted. Commissioners, I just think that is interesting to me, that anytime you look at an aerial view of properties in this community, you can always note Leon County's properties. All of them look like the fairground from the top, looking down. And I think that that's a distinction which we ought be interested and curious about changing. Our properties just look just like Leon County Fairground, dated, old, no matter what is built, how much money comes. And we have very, very unique value properties of which we're lingering, we're not updating, we're not keeping pace with investment around us. And actually, we are the weak link in the economic chain in terms of development here. I'd like to encourage us and spur us to do more, to get excited in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. This is on our consent agenda, with no other Commissioners in queue. Do we have any items that are pulled from the consent agenda at this time?
We do not.
I do have a motion moved by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Lindley. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Administrator, any citizens to be heard on our agenda items?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, you've got two speaker cards. The first one is Jean Kellum. Jean Kellum.
Hello, Commissioners. I am also-
If you could, when you come to the podium, give your name and address for the record, please.
Ms. Lindley, I remember you from the Tallahassee Democrat. You and I are old-school Tallahassee. My name is Jean Kellum. I'm here to represent It's Meow or Never for Ferals. I live at 2691 Mission Road. Commissioners, It's Meow or Never is a very, very active animal welfare group here in Tallahassee, Florida. We work in Tallahassee and Leon County. Our mission, and stated mission, is to reduce the feral cat population, which is growing in Leon County and our community. The cats are around homes, apartment complexes, and businesses, and we provide care and solace to these generally unwanted animals. We meet these goals by a time-tested process called TNR. TNR stands for Trap, Neuter, and Return. Of course, if the cat is a female, it would be a spay and not a neuter, but TNR is the standard acronym for this procedure. Our organization, since 2012, has spayed or neutered over 4,000 cats. All of these cats have received rabies shots and any needed medical treatment. Our community, like most, has a small percentage of scabies in the cat population. We treat these cats, preventing that spread. Scabies is very, very communicable, and it is a very dangerous disease. Please look at that number, 4,000, since it has been determined by the Humane Society and Alley Cats that one, one unspayed female and all her offspring can result in 11 million cats in nine years, and that is the third page on your handout. I hope that you Commissioners will see the value in what our organization does. We trap at private homes, apartment complexes, businesses, FSU, FAMU, and TCC. This is done free of charge. We do not charge anyone for this. We pay for these procedures by our own fundraising and by a partnership with other animal welfare groups primarily be the solution. We are controlling the free cat, free roaming cat population, and we are a service to the property owners where the cats are by dramatically reducing the number of animals being euthanized at the shelter. I communicate with Jeff Doyle, who is the shelter president right now. He knows of what we do. The kittens we find and trap are adopted through our highly successful adoption program. But honestly, the majority of cats that we trap are older and too aggressive to adopt out. These are returned. Commissioners, we are not here asking you for any money at all. We are not. We fund ourselves. Instead, what I am here asking you for is to look through your land holdings. We are asking you to identify a small parcel of land, 10 to 15 acres, that you can identify as a sanctuary. Certainly, you know that there is no a way that we can take these cats. I cannot tell you the number of times that I trap a cat, usually four or five cats, and the landholders say, "It's wonderful that you're here, Ms. Kellum. It's wonderful that you're trapping these cats. Please do not bring them back. Take them away." There is no a way. And so, we are asking you to provide a place for these cats, for us to take them away. Away does not exist. There is a, there is no designated sanctuary. Brevard County, Orange County, Duval County, all have designated a way. They have designated sanctuaries. I am a resident, a graduate of Merritt Island High School in Brevard County. I know of this sanctuary. It does exist. That's what we're asking you for. Certainly, in all of your land holdings, perhaps something around the, perhaps something around the city dump, perhaps something near the national forest.
Ms. Kellum, can you wrap it up for us?
Yes.
Okay.
We just need a piece of land. We will take ownership. We will allow you to retain ownership. We just need a piece of land for these unwanted cats. The business owners will be glad to see us. They just don't want us to bring the cats back. That's what we need. We need land.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Is there any questions anyone has?
No, we don't. Okay. Thank you. Do we have other speakers to be heard?
The next speaker is Bart Bibler. That's your final speaker.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Since your last meeting, several positive events have moved us forward on improving race relations and crime prevention in the ZIP Code 32304 area code and throughout Leon County. Number one, thank you to Marion Waters and the Tallahassee Democrat for the informative and objective article published last Friday, including interview quotes by several of you. Secondly, thank you, Vince Long, for your email sent last Wednesday to all Commissioners, attempting to look deeper into the statistics behind the 32304 problems of poverty and illiteracy. Understanding the demographics and the data is critical to targeting our public resources, as well as recognizing that we also have high poverty in ZIP Codes 32301, 03, 05, and 10. And thank you, Tallahassee Chamber of Commerce, for recommending that we put the issue of consolidation on the backburner until we collaboratively address our economic segregation, increased and diversified job growth, our reputational risks of crime and corruption, and the creation of a vision for growth that is widely accepted and believed in by our community. By focusing on ZIP Code Area 32304, it is my hope that we can come together as a community and build bold plans for economic growth and shared prosperity. I urge that you not approach this planning on how to redistribute the economic pie, but how to enlarge the pie, expand our workforce, and ensure that everybody gets to enjoy it. My thanks for the many helpful programs of the county. I admire and appreciate each of your efforts toward the improvements. My sole objective is to enhance the collaboration and public engagement, and I applaud your public service.
Thank you, Mr. Bibler. Next up, general business.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, we have one additional speaker card just in. Carla LaRoche.
Ms. LaRoche, if you would, your name and address for the record, please. Thank you for joining us.
Good afternoon. My name is Carla LaRoche. My work address, I work at FSU Law School. My physical address is 1800 Mikasuki Commons Road, Tallahassee, Florida. I wanted to thank, specifically Commissioner Maddox, but also the Commissioner as a whole, for appointing me to the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. I, as I mentioned, work at the FSU Law School. I am the director of a new clinic, the Gender and Family Justice Clinic. And I've enjoyed empowering my students through their journey through law school, understanding how they can empower others. So my students go into Gadsden County Correctional and teach family law workshops. They will be going into Leon County Detention Center to do the same thing, starting next month. Through those discussions, my students have understand the journey that the women who attend the workshops face when they return from incarceration, including health, employment, and other issues that the Commission itself works on. And so I look forward to adding my research, the skill, the experience of my students to the Commission, and also learning from the Commissioners. So I thank you for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. All right, no other systems to be heard on non-agenda items.
That concludes your speakers. Mr. Chairman.
All right, it's for our general business, item number 12.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this item seeks your acceptance of a status report on the 2019 Florida Legislative Session. And also, you'll see that it includes the addition of one legislative issue as requested by the Supervisor of Elections, marked earlier, a little earlier in the meeting. We were planning to hand it over to Andy Johnson to provide a presentation, Commissioners. However, as always, it is your discretion. We're also happy to just answer any questions you might have. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it back to you.
All right. Move options one and two. All those in favor signify, moved by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Lowe. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Andy, I'm sure that you had plenty prepared for us, but thank you for coming and-
Let's ask Jeff Sharkey some hard questions. Can we-
Hello there, Mr. Sharkey. Thank you for coming out as well. Item number 13, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this item seeks the Board's approval of the Third Amendment to the Agreement with Waste Management for the hauling and disposal of waste from the Leon County Transfer Station to Spring Hill Landfill to ensure long-term disposal of solid waste at the most competitive cost. The item before you is consistent with the Board's previous direction back in December. It reflects all the terms and conditions we brought to you at that time, and again, reflects the Board's direction at that time with no changes. With that, we are recommending option one, and happy to answer any questions.
I'll second that.
Moved option one by Commissioner Lindley, seconded by Commissioner Maddox. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. General Business, item number 14.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this item seeks Board authorization for staff to issue RFPs for marketing, advertising, and public relations, and research services to be contracted through the Division of Tourism. The current contracts are set to expire in September of this year. This will give us adequate time to conduct this competitive process and have recommendations back to the Board before that time. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions. I'll note that Carrie Post is here, and I'll hand it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, we do have a couple of Commissioners in queue for discussion.
Chairman, I was in queue for the last item, but I'm good with this one.
Okay. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this is a great item. I like the breakdown. I would like to move it first, as is.
Okay.
Options one, two, and three, staff recommendation.
So moved, seconded by Commissioner Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I'm going to save, my question, Mr. Chair, was going to be a little off the RFP, but I know you have some new Board members coming in. That's another item on our agenda later. I anticipate we'll have a budget discussion item, Mr. County Administrator, and may get a sense of update on strategic plan and other things at that point. My pause there, Mr. Chairman, was just that I'm continually hear great things about Carrie, what you and your team are doing regionally and throughout the community, and just really appreciate that. So thank you very much.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded by Commissioner Lindley. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, real quick, one point.
Yes.
Mr. Administrator, I know we have MWBE standards on our construction and contracts and things of that nature, but when it comes to our professional contracts, we don't, they don't have MWBE standards today. They do.
I think we do have those reflected in these RFPs.
Okay, thank you. So we'll make sure.
Item 15, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this item seeks your approval of a voluntary annexation from St. Peter's Anglican Church to annex their property located on Thomasville Road. County staff has reviewed the request, consistent with our policy, and is recommending option one.
Who's staff's recommendation?
Option one by Commissioner Lowe, seconded by Commissioner Lindley. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any Commissioner, Mr. Proctor, you're in queue.
Mr. Chairman, was the church leaving the county, or rushed to the city? Are they leaving the city to rush into the county?
Um, Mr. Administrator-
Into the, this would be a voluntary annexation into the city.
What does that say about us? All right. Thank you very much. The church has wanted to leave us in the county.
Still there.
Huh?
They're still there.
Well, they are in the county. Thank you very much.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item number 16, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this item is to confirm the appointment of City Commissioner Elaine Bryant to the Tourism Development Council for the remainder of the unexpired term ending December 31, 2020.
Moved by Commissioner, excuse me, Dozier, and seconded by Commissioner Minor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by the same sign. Motion passes unanimously. This is the time in our meeting where we will defer to Commissioner comments. We plan on adjourning briefly before the public hearings at six, at five, so I think I'll start in order and go to the Vice Chair, if you would. Commissioner Lowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nothing really to report, except for I got appointed to the FEMA National Advisory Board, representing local government. So I've, it's a three-year term. I found out right before the holidays, but the federal government was shutting down so that we didn't make any announcements. But it's a, it's a big win, I think, for us as a county to have some representation on there. So just FYI. Thank you.
Commissioner Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had recently, in the last week or so, talked to a veterinarian consultant from the University of Florida about some best practices that might assist us with our animal shelter and animal services, both the city and the county. We do partner up pretty well. But I wondered if we might have an agenda item on down the road, kind of reviewing these proposals and suggestions for maybe better ways to work together with some efficiencies. Was it Ms. Kellum who was with this group just now? I mean, her issue, you know, might be considered that. I know some other counties kind of- I know some other counties kind of do a better job with the feral cat and animal services responsibilities, and so I just would like to make a motion for an agenda item at some point before too long that we could look into these proposals, these best practices proposals, that the, I think our own animal services folks have been working with them on that, so that'd be my motion.
Yeah, so I think we should, Mr. Administrator, would you? Do we want to add it as an agenda item? Is that what you're asking, Commissioner?
Pardon me?
Add it as an agenda item.
Yes.
Okay, right. And seconded by Commissioner Dozier.
With the question, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, sure.
Commissioner Linley, thank you for bringing that up. I think the consultants may have met with all or several of us. I'm not sure they were doing outreach to a lot of folks. Mr. County Administrator, my sense was that they were hired, I believe, by the city, but their review touches on city and county issues, which is great. Did you, I mean, and I fully support the agenda item, I just wonder if it might be time, like Commissioner Linley, to wait until their report is finished, so the city and county, we get the same information around the same time and move forward. I didn't know if you had a time.
No, and actually, that's why I didn't really mention the time. I just see this coming, coming up, and I would like us to be at least in partnership in some way to understand. I assumed, honestly, I thought everyone had kind of seen this report in discussing it with them earlier, that they were going to try to speak to everybody in any case. So if there, you know, there's not a time on it, if we get that final report, we can move on it at that time.
Yep.
I think it's safe to, it's safe to say that we'll just bring it back as an agenda item for animal control and the related services, correct?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, one last comment there. My suggestion, Commissioner Linley, was just that it seemed like the final report might have a lot of different types of recommendations that we would need to work with the city and reflect on, so for efficiency, which you are my champ on efficiency, if that comes out in the next few months, I think, you know, it might be nice to dovetail it with what the city is doing, but we don't want to wait too long. So I'm, I'm fully supportive, you know, with staff finding the best time. Thank you.
Right, and I mean, if that's, I mean, if the County Administrator would just like to leave this lingering, that's all right with me, too. I just want to get it on our agenda at some point.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we'll take a vote on that to include it as an agenda item in a future meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. Motion passes.
And that's all I have right now. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a few things. The first thing is, I wanted to, I want to thank Mr. Bibler for all his efforts with 32304 Summit, but I wanted to ask the Board, a request of the Board that we ask the County Administrator to send a letter to the Children's Services Council, as well as the Human Needs Assessment Consulting, asking, asking for their evaluation to include specific analysis and recommendations to address the issues of poverty and illiteracy specifically within the 32304 zip code. I believe that if we're going to really try to solve this problem, I think two of the deepest problems they have there is rooted in poverty and illiteracy. These are two things that we have come back to us that I think should include recommendations and evaluations of what's going on within that zip code. So I'd like to make a motion that we get the County Administrator to send a letter to those two respective groups for us to get their information back. And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Administrator, I think that they more than likely will reporting, will be reporting their recommendations and findings to us, correct?
That's correct in both cases.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that's my motion.
Good. I'd like to second that, Mr. Chair, but if someone else wants to jump in, I know that if I have a moment to speak, I'll speak in a minute, obviously, but that involves children that are...
You can second it.
Okay, good. Thank you. Then I'll say my remarks. Item to be brought back, as well as a resolution to receive further data regarding the exact discrepancies and the, and in-depth dive to 32304, seconded by Commissioner Linley. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by the same sign. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. I appreciate that bold step.
No, thank you. I think, I think the recommendations can, could provide us some solid steps in moving forward in how we address the problems that we have going on within that zip code. The second thing I'm going to ask for is, everybody know that Dr. Pittman is leaving Coker, and so I want to ask for a proclamation to be presented to her tomorrow, celebrating her time at Pittman, I mean, at Pittman, at Coker, and the things that she's accomplished while she's there. Make a motion for that.
A motion has been made to, a proclamation to be presented to Ms. Pittman as she leaves Coker, and I believe goes to Atlanta.
Yep.
To serve as a instructor in their art design program for Savannah College of Arts, something like that. And it has been seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Last thing I have, Mr. Chair, is Agnes Fury is a champion for the cause when it comes to crime victims awareness, and she's asked us to, to execute a proclamation declaring April as National Crime Victims Awareness Month. That proclamation will be presented at our March the 12th meeting, so I'd like to make a motion for that proclamation as well.
Motion has been made to recognize April as National Crime Victim Awareness Month, seconded by Commissioner Loz. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. Motion passes.
That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got two proclamation requests as well, and yes, we seem to be doing a lot of these these days, but I suppose a lot of good stuff going on. The first one is our annual Women's History Month proclamation. I believe I saw Shelley Gomez from Oasis in the audience before, but she's not here anymore. It is to be presented at the Oasis Center for Women and Girls 11th Annual Women's History Month luncheon on March 8th. My first motion?
Motion's been made, seconded. All right, and all in favor of the proclamation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by the same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My second request is a proclamation designating March 2019 as Multiple Scroasis Awareness Month, if you can say that, to be presented at the February 26 Commission Meeting.
Motion's been made, seconded by Commissioner Maddox to recognize March. I'm going to take the easy way out and call it MS Awareness Month.
That's a good one.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Finally, I just wanted to mention that I went to the Recovery Summit in Marianna, attended by probably close to 200 people a few weeks ago, from all different counties affected by Hurricane Michael. Our very own Matt Cavell was there. We gave a brief update from Leon. The feedback I got, and I did not share this with you that day, Matt, it came later, people very much appreciate the fact that our after-action report reflected the way we supported other counties, things we could do better, and it, it definitely resonated with them, your comments, and what we've already done, and they think it'll help going forward. So I just wanted to share that with you all, that we may not have been as heavily impacted as our neighbors, and certainly have more wherewithal than a lot of them, but we've already started down a process that will help them long-term, and it was noted. So thank you all. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. County Administrator, for y'all's interest.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'm very appreciative for the efforts of Mr. Bibler and leadership to look at that data, and I'm very appreciative for Commissioner Maddox's request that we would take a deeper dive and to do some analytic of the data. Being in the University of Town, which we are located, that's what we do. That's exactly what we do. We analyze, investigate, discover, engage information, and so it's very much a part of the culture of Tallahassee. On March the 7th, Commissioners, I have announced publicly a call for a public setting, a public summit that will be in a public setting, that we might bring those high and best analytic minds to the table. I'm very, very pleased to announce a plethora of organizations of the first rank of our community that have made commitments to be a part. I've asked various entities to take leadership in looking at specific areas in the 32304. In terms of an assessment of what is, what potentially can be, what can be improved, the Chamber of Commerce's report merely amplifies, in some ways mirrors, what Harvard has said to us in 2015, what University of Toronto has said to us in 15, and we've heard this before. It is a growing focal, focus and focal point of entities that have abilities to measure and assess sociological conditions. When this many various entities with no stakes in this area, geographic area, continue to say the same things, and the echo reverberates, and that reverberation comes back to my heart because I'm a product of the 32304 community. And among the D-streets of Delaware and Dent and Dewey and Dunn and Dade and Dover, I'm a product of Dover Street, 700 block. My grandmother lived there for over 60 years on Dover Street. My mama grew up on Dover Street, bounded by Dewey Street. And I grew up on Dover Street, and my family lives in 32304, and we've lived in that area a good long time. And I believe that for the piece of dirt that represented the foundation to the foundation, which is Bill Proctor, I would be less than what they produced me to be if I turned my back or continued to have deaf ears to conditions that are being trumpeted by reputable people who are not in any way engaged and have nothing to gain by saying the same thing. There's a problem. Economics, there's a problem. Literacy. And so I'm glad that the Superintendent of Schools has weighed in, checked in, and wants to be a part of taking a deep dive and being responsible for hopefully presenting the data of what it looks like, literacy, and how it is being measured, that we all might have a competent and same view. It's very, very important. I'm very appreciative for the Superintendent's reach out and willingness to come to the table. It's an expectation that we'll be able to announce within the next 10 days a stellar list of participants, folk who care. It's been said that the chain is measured directly in proportion to, its strength is measured in proportion to its weakest link. And if an analogy can be made from that, a community is likewise as strong as the weakest of its links. We can make this stronger, and Mr. Bibler, counting on you to marshal the information, and I appreciate you coming along to do what you do. Commissioners, I would like to ask the County Commission for support. I know that we have supported receptions and they've come to our community before. We've had, you know, a nice chunk set aside for various things, from the horses to, I guess, the kitty cats now, to a lot of stuff. And I'm asking you all to walk with me in that we would make commitment for $10,000 because the first installment is our first meeting of a summit. But we will have subsequent meetings and breakout of the different groups that might gather around education, economics, health, and other variables. It will likely require at least a series of three to four engagements and looks before we're able to set a collective vision and action plan for our community and its partners to strengthen what appears to be verid and sundry issues. And I know that this touches your district, it touched your district, it touched my district. And I feel that because I've grown up in this district, 32304, I went to church there, went to nursery school there, all of me, that's who I am. I want y'all's help to move this conference forward, this summit forward, that we can organize and have the kind of credible, meaningful resources to give leadership to our voices coming together. And if that's a need for it to come back on the 26th, I make that a motion, asking for $10,000 to support this effort, as we would need to feed, we would need to provide refreshments, and we just may need to pay a summit leader or director or what you call them, a facilitator, I don't know. But I would like for the Commission to please walk with me as I try to lead this effort for the county, with the county, with the city, for the city, and all of that. That's my motion.
Your motion has been made. Is there a second to the motion, motion or item for discussion? Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the efforts, certainly part, you've been here the last two meetings, I think, so thank you for that. And you're right, there was a great article in the paper. Commissioner Proctor, I understand, I just didn't want to leave this, Mr. Chair, without a second, without moving forward. We do get involved in a lot of different types of events. I can't second this at this time for funding or even an agenda item, mostly because I feel like we have done a tremendous amount in various parts of what we do to address these types of issues. There may need to be a hyper-focus on areas of the zip code, but County Administrator, I think your email really highlighted how much we need to dig into that data, so I am open to having a different type of discussion about this, reflecting on what comes out of the summit, things like that, but I'm not, I'm not sure what the, what the benefit would, I shouldn't say the word benefit, but if we're ready to support these types of meetings at this point without more dialogue on it. I think we are doing a lot already. Obviously, we need to do more, but I think we need to have wrapper arms around it in a little different way.
I will, I'll save my comments. Is there a second to the motion? Right? Motion dies for lack of a second. Commissioner Minor.
Mr. Chairman, I hadn't finished. Okay. My next issue, Commissioner, if I still had the floor. Thank you, Commissioners, for hearing. My next issue, I want to say to the public that the City Commission received a letter from me asking that they would rescind building a police headquarters in the South Side to be located in the Save the Lot parking lot across from Piggly Wiggly. I asked the city to rescind their efforts to move forward to hire an architect, as I believe that... to hire an architect, as I believe that there was not a reasonable amount of public input. Amazingly, notes were shared with the city commission that former Mayor Andrew Gillum had raised that concern about public input and quick and swift decision-making occurring around this issue with no other land options looked at, with current projections of land that would cost more than $400,000 per acre, and just a small amount. And the young lady came up moments ago and asked for a small piece of property of about 10 to 15 acres, she said, as a small piece of property for the cats. Well, the city is contemplating a 12-acre site that would be $5 million, and that $5 million would be there at that Save-A-Lot parking lot. There's a lot on the, across the community, a lot of winds blowing in various directions, but I am pleased to announce that the city did send a memo that they will be hosting listening sessions seeking public input on February the 18th, which is Monday, at 6:00 at the Senior Center located on Sixth Avenue and Monroe Street. If you've got something you want to tell the city commission about this particular police headquarters that's targeted to be built in the South Side, the city commission desires to hear from you public on February the 18th, Monday, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. If you cannot make it on Monday, the city extends an opportunity for members of this community to join them at Walker Ford on February the 19th, which is a Tuesday. You have a chance at 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. to let the city commission know what you're thinking about and what you want them to do. The money that they are spending is your money and mine, and because, simply because they've gone this far without regard to what you had to say. I want you to step up to the plate if you're for it, come down there and let the commission know you're for it, and if you ain't for it, do the same thing and tell this commission what you want. But once again, two bites at an apple to input whether you will have a city police headquarters in the South Side for the next 40, 50 years. If you don't want it, go tell them to the face you don't want it, and if you do, show up that they not be in a quandary as to how the public feels. I want to thank you, public. I'm looking forward to seeing you at both sites. Chairman, I thank you for allowing me to say that.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few minutes ago, we had a motion about adding the 32304 consideration to the Human Services Needs Assessment. One thing, I don't know if this requires a motion or not, but one thing I, in a lot of the work that I've done over the last couple of years, there's, there's always been a hard part about Leon County, and this applies to what Commissioner Proctor was, was saying, too, is that it's really hard for us to, to incorporate the student factor in this. There, there are large portions of our student population that are in the 32304 zip code, and even according to the Tallahassee Democrats article about the chamber's study, it said that they excluded students that were living on, in dorm housing, but there was no mention in the article about what they did to factor out of off-campus students. It's really hard, and I know this because of the poverty research that I do in my other life, it's really hard to identify students that are truly living in poverty, just because of the fact that they're in school, and it's hard to gauge what, what their income is, what it's paid for by parents, et cetera. So, I don't know if this, if this merits a motion level request, but I'm hoping that in the Human Needs Assessment, Human Services Needs Assessment, there's also consideration of how to factor in the student populations for that. Whoever the folks are doing the assessment, I'm sorry for this, because there's a constant scope creep here coming up, but I think that's important for us to be able to target and to address Commissioner Proctor's concerns, to know exactly how that student population affects our, there are students that we know are living in poverty. It's just hard for us to really truly understand what numbers we're dealing with.
Right, and I think that would be part of, I know that that would be a very important part for me as we look at the total population in that area. There's, just a quick fact, there's 82% of the folks that live in that zip code that are part-time, part-time or not employed, which normally would indicate a college student schedule. But go ahead.
Yeah.
Commissioner Minor?
Yeah, and, and, you know, again, to Commissioner Proctor's point, I mean, poverty's a huge problem here. I, I do know in terms of food insecurity metrics, which is the idea that you don't have consistent access to healthy food, Leon County's number four. Out of 67 counties, we are the fourth most food insecure county in the state. This is a big problem. But the, the needs assessment that we're going to have, the, I think drilling down to the census tract allows us to target these neighborhoods, specific neighborhoods that are having issues, working with, as I said this in the paper the other day, working with those neighbors in those neighborhoods, asking them what they need to help lift themselves out of poverty, I think is a really key part of that discussion. The other thing I wanted to mention is, on February 2nd, Saturday, you'll see this on some of the slides up here, I attended the USA Track and Field Cross Country Championships. It's a great shot, wasn't it? And it was, it's just, I'm sure y'all have been there out, out there before during these championships. This is my first time. I spoke with one of the USA TF officials there, and he told me that Appalachian Regional Park's certified course is one of the best in the nation for runners, one of the best cross-country courses in the nation, and that there are runners all across the country. Carrie has mentioned this, Carrie Post has mentioned this. There are runners all over the country that look forward to coming to these national championships, right here in Tallahassee, in Leon County. And so, I really, to the, to the tune of having nearly 20,000 out-of-town visitors come to Leon County just for that period during, from October 2017 to February 2018, 20,000 visitors come in and stay in our hotels, eating in our restaurants, simply because of, of the work of Leon County, of Carrie Post, of Amanda Heidecker, and enticing this whole new strategic effort on bringing runners, cross-country runners, to come to Tallahassee. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that. I know you all have heard this before. I know Carrie has mentioned this to you before, but I just wanted to reiterate that because February 2nd was an eye-opener for me, and $4.5 million of economic impact for this county, simply because of our cross-country course and the championship events that Carrie and Amanda have, have hosted. So, thank you very much, Carrie. Appreciate it. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. I'll be brief. Commissioner Maddox, thank you for the motion and for the deeper dive into the true data. And Commissioner Proctor, I grew up before we were reclassified to 32310 at Star Route 1, Box 95-0, 32304, and I'm very, I'm very proud to be from 32304 as well, and to have served children and families and students in that community for 30 years now, and, and it's, Commissioner Minor as well has served in his capacity. We have a partnership with Leon County Schools where he provides, where his organization provides meals for 100 students at Fort Braden every single week, and we could do 100 more with no problem. So, I want to commend all of the commissioners in jumping into the conversation about 32304 and the concerns we have from mental health to crime to poverty to student fluency and student reading. Those are all things that, in the end, we know that education is what will break cycles of poverty, and I'm glad to see the superintendent, too, is stepping to the plate as well in that area. That's all the comments I have, and do we have anything from the attorney? Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, sir.
All right. We will have a brief adjournment and come back for our public hearings at 6:00.